Good evening, everybody, and welcome to. You're your audio on your laptop, joys of hybridness. It's on your keyboard. Check, check, testing one, two. All right, welcome back, everybody. So good evening and welcome to the now I'm not. Nice. This is isn't this getting ridiculous? One second while I mute my speaker. Where's my mouse? Oh, this is a like casual fall here. All right.
Greetings, everyone.
Well, welcome back, Councilor McDonald from vacation. Nice to have you here. Thank you. The regular council meeting Wednesday, March twenty second, twenty twenty three. It is now six o'clock, and I think we have our technical issues behind us. Counselor Pro Censor regrets for this evening and was not present at the in camera session that began at four and will be unable to attend this evening. Other than that, we have a whole house with Councilor McDonald attending virtually. Councilor McDonald, please use your raise hand feature on the zoom. When you talk to so I don't miss you, I've got the grid or that works too. I just don't want to miss any of your valuable input this evening. So that being said, I'm going to turn things over to Counselor East, who is going to read. We've been passing this role around, the introductory remarks and land acknowledgement, followed by a moment of silent reflection. Counselor.
Welcome. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people. Known as the Chippewa Tri Council compromised of Boasley First Nations, Rama First Nation, and Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre Confederation Treaty five and Treaty sixteen, and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Matisse. And that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people. I would like to deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate? Please exit the room in orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main entrance, those doors over there and to the left. And proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit point right behind me. Up the stairs, check the door for heat before opening. And if it is safe, exit onto the second floor, turn right and proceed out the door in front of you. Washrooms are located on the second floor to the left of the seating area. An elevator is located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone that exhibits violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. Council meetings are recorded via Zoom and are posted on the town's YouTube site. The meeting are also broadcasted on Rogers TV Midland Channel fifty-three.
Thank you very much, Rick Counselor, and if we could just pause for a moment of silent reflection before we start this evening's meeting. Thank you. I have number eight on our agenda this evening, which are motions arising from closed meeting discussions. We did have a closed meeting at four o'clock today. So I have a motion moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cotton, that counsel receives information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal report. An update provided by the manager of planning services at the closed meeting of council on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, with respect to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Minutes of settlement for two, three, three Midland Point Road and one, six, eight, two, one Highway twelve, also known as Cancer Developments. We've had our discussion in camera, and this is confirming the directions. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion's carried. And next move by Counselor Ball, seconded by Counselor Meredith, that further to the confidential correspondence dated February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three from the downtown BIA and related discussions during our closed meeting of council on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Council here in confirms the appointment of the following individuals to the downtown Midland BIA Board for a term to coincide with the term of council. Those members being Joanie Petroff, Mike Selwood, Roberta Douglas, Sarah Kenny, Nicole French, and Megan Marshallton. Thank you very much for putting your names forward and for volunteering to be on the BIA Board and some heavy lifting to do this term. And we look forward to a deputation at a future meeting with your new strategic plan that I'm excited for council to hear about. All those in favor of that resolution? Any opposed? That one's carried. And lastly, motion moved, seconded by Counselor East, that further to discussions held at the closed meeting council of council on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three regarding the twenty-twenty-two Award of Merit recipients. Council here in confirms its direction to staff on how to proceed. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. That's a closely guarded secret, everybody, so have to stay tuned for what comes from that. All right, next, I have a motion moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor Bald, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three be approved as amended. The amendment being the removal of item twenty-two point three, motions for which notice was given. Consideration of two stop signs along Hanley Street between Manley and William Street, and to determine if the requested stop signs meet the criteria set out in the town's traffic calming policy as per the request of Counselor Balt. This has been pulled and may be advanced to the future date. For now, that is the amendment. No other amendments to the agenda, therefore, all in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. And I'm sorry for those following along in numerical order. I have skipped number seven, which is declarations of conflict of interest, which traditionally arises. Comes from before we come out of closed session. So I'll ask, because it is a matter of housekeeping, if there's any declarations of conflict of interest to relate to today's open session. Agenda. Seeing none. Back on track again to item number ten, the consent agenda moved by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Ball, that the items and related recommendations contained within the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of ten point four point one CSR twenty twenty-three dash fifteen Open Air Burning Bylaw, which will be considered under section seventeen, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration. This includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Before we pass this, is there any discussion on items that are on the consent agenda that were not pulled, that any counselor has any comments about? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is carried. And we use we power through tonight's agenda. We now have a motion moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that council resolve into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Deputy Mayor, I turn the chair over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening to you, council, staff, and of course guests in the audience and to you, the viewers watching this evening. We have some items we'll be discussing tonight. I want to begin with with the agenda on the public meeting. There is no public meeting this evening. There are no presentations to be done this evening. Number fourteen, there are no reports from the Integrity Commissioner. And we are now into deputations. We have two items for presentation this evening. They're all going to be received as information. Council will have a chance to ask questions or clarify any thing that's said on the presentations. The presenters will have ten minutes to speak, and we're going to begin with the first item. It's fifteen point one. It's the number of dogs per household. Proposed amendment to the town's licensing and control of dogs by law. I have Mrs. Jennifer Kelly to present to council. I'll call upon Ms. Kelly to to come to the microphone and do a presentation. So Ms. Kelly, you have ten minutes to conduct your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Why that's loud? Many of you know me already. My name is Jennifer Kelly. I'm a nurse practitioner. I'm also a resident. I've lived here since two thousand and seven. I've raised three children in this town. I'm a very proud Midland resident. I'm also a Midland business owner. My husband was here. And I own the Brooded Cafe at three forty-nine King Street in downtown Midland. And I'm very much an animal lover, so I'm here with an ask. We can go to the next slide. This is just the contents of my presentation, so we can skip over that. So I want to show what the current status of the bylaws in our area are, and my ask is that we please amend the current bylaw to align with animal welfare experts. And I'll go into a little bit more. So currently, Midland has a limit of two dogs per household. And Tay and Penetang are carbon copies of that bylaw. Or Madante is at three, Springwater four, Tiny is four. I believe Barry is four, just for comparison. And there's no stipulation on any of them really, as far as like what your dwelling looks like or where you're located or any of that kind of stuff. So I'm going to next slide, please. These are some of our current and past fur babies, just for, you know, pulling at heartstrings a little bit. Next slide. So who does this affect? So it affects pet owners and animal lovers within the town, for sure, all residents of Midland. It affects our animal rescues and welfare agencies, and of course, all the fur baby babies that are waiting for homes. Next slide, please. So you might wonder kind of what's at stake. So we are not in alignment with what the OSPCA is saying and what our animal welfare agencies are saying as far as a safe number of dogs in a household. In fact, there is no safe number. The efforts are being put on, you know, prevention of cruelty rather than numbering and curtailing who can have animals. So we wouldn't do this with children. We wouldn't, you know, go into a family and say, well, you're not, you don't have the capacity to care for five children. And a lot of us think of our animals as children. So I kind of draw a parallel there that we should maybe change our focus a little bit. And let's face it, there's already families in town housing more than two dogs. This bylaw isn't heavily enforced. So why don't we make it a little different, make a better statement? The the current licensing is that we can license two dogs per household. There is an exemption, but it's not clearly defined as to what an exemption is. Nor is it clearly defined as to when that exemption can be revoked. The animal rescues and potential adopters are deterred by bylaws. So even though it's not enforced, an animal rescue agency who looks at local laws will not allow someone to adopt a third dog into their home because it's against our law. So it is a deterrent in that way. Just like in Midland, we can't house pigs. We're just not allowed to have them, even if they're running around in our houses like a dog. And and I think that initially this bylaw is probably intended for animal welfare purposes. But it doesn't stop puppy mills and over breeding. It's just that's not happening. So we can go to the next slide, please. So why now? There's a few reasons why now. No doubt, everybody knows this thing COVID happened, and we're all in a huge mental health crisis. So we're essentially saying that a family of five can't each have, you know, emotional support dog or whether it's formally labeled that or not. I certainly rely on my pets for some kind of emotional balance in my life, and I know I'm not alone in that. The the rescues and shelters are beyond capacity at this point. I follow a lot of them, and I have friends who run rescues. And they're desperate. There are people that could be placing these dogs. And again, it's a deterrent if we have a two dog limit. And then the other thing is that the bylaw is outdated, and we are at the lower end of our region. That's one point, but we live in an expensive and complicated world. Families are looking at alternative housing. They're coming together. You know, two families are now living together. When my husband and I got together, he had a dog that joined our family. That happens a lot. So are we going to be in a position where they can't all be licensed under one home? Or are we going to be in a position where people are going to try and remove dogs from houses? I don't think we want to do that. Next slide, please. So there is some support that I've been able to garner. I do have a changed order petition that can't be formally presented, but it has hundred signatures, which is not a ton, but it's there. That's without any push or advertising or, you know, mass distribution of any kind. I do have a letter from an animal rescue organization in our region, which I will share, but I was not able to bring it here today. And this was the the email from the OSPCA because I asked for their opinion on what the safe number is. And they are saying that there's no perfect number for how many dogs can safely and properly be in a home. And their focus is on establishing provincial standards for the care of a care of dogs and other animals. So animal welfare is not actually much at the municipal level. We have animal control, and we can do some things, but it's provincial, and it's not even really in the hands of the SPCA, at least not here. They refer people to the OPP and to provincial animal welfare. Next slide, please. So this is like what I consider the Holy Grail of dog bylaw. So Greater Sudbury is quite a large geographical area. They have urban areas and they have rural areas. And they are saying that there is no limit on on the number of dogs that you can have in your home as long as they're spayed or neutered. Yay, like that is great. Because it's it's also making a statement that our town cares about how dogs are cared for. We want to limit the pet population. We want to have responsible pet owners. And if someone is paying for their dog to be spayed or neutered, they're more likely to be a responsible pet owner. And then it goes on about, you know, if you have unaltered pets and when the bylaw came into place. So this has been in place for six years. And it seems to be, and there's a fostering thing in there, too, if people want to foster dogs, but six years. So and it's working in Sudbury. So I don't see why it wouldn't work perfectly well here. And it's an opportunity to update our bylaw. And also, like I said, make a statement about how we want animals cared for in our town, which we're currently not doing. And next, please. So there's some references for you. All of the bylaws are Googleable. Ontario SPCA has some good information, and I'm happy to field any questions if I can.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly, for your presentation. A worthy topic for a community that has a lot of pets in your community. So I'm sure that council may have some questions for you or comments regarding your presentation. I can open yourself to council. Do we have any questions or comments to be made through the presenter this evening? Hold on, sorry, Counselor Ball.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. It was very well put together. I think that I campaigned on the fact of changing our animal bylaws. I didn't specifically talk about dogs at all, but I think the way that you've presented it with having dogs spayed or neutered. You you did mention there are a lot of people that do own more than two dogs. I think everybody is well aware of that, and I think being able to amend that gives more profit to Town of Midland. They're going to be the ones that are responsible owners, responsible pet owners for spaying and neutering, as well as being able to actually have somebody come in and be able to license their pet who wants to. I think that's definitely a positive thing. So I I see no problem with amending it. Personally, I would support it.
Yes, next I have the mayor.
Thanks for coming and speaking to us about this. I know we've had some sidebar conversations at the cafe over cafe, talking about this very thing and how can a balance be found? So if I'm understanding correctly, and just for clarity, I haven't seen this presentation, other than talking to to Jen, as I do to many people in the community every day about different issues. But is what you're suggesting that we remove effectively remove the limit, but keep licensing as a requirement, which already requires proof of rabies vaccination? And provides a little bit of cash in hand because we have to pay for the dog catcher and the enforcement. But also add the proof of spaying or neutering to that requirement per license.
Yes.
But that's basically the ask.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, if you're moving the the limit of two, yes, as long as they're fixed.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
I have Counselor Bow. Yes.
So the limit would be two if they were not spayed or neutered, and then that would come into effect based off of having two or having three or more.
Correct.
Thank you. I have Counselor McDonald, who would like to ask a question. She's up on the screen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Kelly, you mentioned that the exemptions in our present bylaw are not clearly defined. Would that be an avenue that we could consider as well in defining the exemptions?
I think that if we're going to remove the two dog limit and make it contingent on the pet being spayed or neutered, there may not be as much of a need for exemptions. Because it wouldn't matter if the pet was formally identified as a medical dog or an emotional support dog, because there's no limit anyway. I don't know if we'd want to start making exceptions for having more than two dogs unaltered. There's always exemptions for people that are formal registered breeders and kennels, I should say that. So if they're they're being licensed as a kennel or a breeder, that's a completely different avenue. I'm just talking about people's companion pets.
If I may, Mr. Deputy Mayor. In regards to the exemption. If you have a fear of dogs and that your neighbor has the ability to have as many dogs as he wants. That that causes me some concern.
I think that to respond to that, I think that the people who are currently hoarding dogs or would harbor massive amounts of dogs aren't necessarily going to care what the bylaw says, because they don't now. That's a hard one to address. I mean, there's there's issues between neighbors, but it's not always up to the municipality to get involved in that. And you could have twelve Chihuahuas who will bite your ankles or three Golden Retriever. Like, there's so much variation. I don't know how you would ever define an aggressive dog or try to protect anybody who has a fear of animals. I don't know that that's something that would be possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Sir McDonald. I just want to make a comment, just in fact, that council can make any notice of motion to look at staff to prepare a report just on the status of the the bylaw, the current bylaw, any statistics that are required to support any concerns that there may be that may arise. So I just wanted to let you know that avenue is available so that council can provide that information. Yes, I have Counselor Downer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Right now, you're allowed two dogs per household. I'd like to, I'd like to take the advice of the Deputy Mayor. I think we may be opening a door here. We may not be able to close. If somebody decides to come in and breed dogs next year, and they got eight or ten dogs. I don't think it's fair to property owners on either side. I think this needs to have a little bit of research done. I I don't want to make a decision on this tonight. I'd like I'd like to know quite a bit more about it, actually. I know in my neighborhood, and I love dogs, believe me. Everybody seems to have more than two dogs right now because they bark all night and they bark all day. So I I'd be afraid of opening a door here that we can't close. So I I'd like to know more about it, and I'd like to direct staff to to research it a little more before I make a decision on it. Thank you.
Just can I just comment to that? So we are talking about altered dogs, though, right? So you're talking, you you mentioned at the beginning of your comment that you're concerned about people over breeding dogs in their backyard, but the the limit would only be lifted to people who are altering their dogs and not able to breed them.
Thank you for that clarification. I have Counselor Ball. Yep. We're going to skip that question. I think she may have answered it. Are there any other questions? Just Counselor East.
Does anybody actually know why the bylaw was limited to two? Is there any history that could be shared with us? So that we have a better understanding of why there was a limit of two set?
I'm the Counselor East. I think you're directing this question to staff. I'll allow the the acting CEO will respond to that.
Through you, your worship, we do have staff online here, but in general, if we want to get into a longer debate about all the reasons, that's really where you should direct staff to write a report and give a fulsome answer instead of something off the cuff here.
I have Counselor Ball. Thank you.
I'd like to put a motion in for staff to look into it, then.
I believe that would be a notice to be given. I have the clerk to make a statement, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through to Counselor Bald. You are able to present a notice of motion when we get to that section of the agenda. The deputation will be received by by council tonight.
Are there any further questions to be asked on this agenda item? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation this evening, and it has opened the door for more questions from council to to our own staff regarding the bylaws. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, our next presentation is from Lakehead University. It's an update on the Aurelia campus. I do have Mr. Michael Denhan to present to council. Sir, you have the board.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. And I know I've got a presentation. I'm actually wondering a little little note on presentation. If we can move the the Zoom window to the far left, upper far left, if that's possible. Because there's going to be some information on the far right. That'll be there. That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Mike Denhan, Vice President of External Relations from Lakehead University. I live in Simcoe County and work on both the Aurelia and Thunder Bay campuses of Lakehead. Thank you for this chance to give you an update on Lakehead, Simcoe County's university. As a first generation Canadian, I learned the value of university education from my dad. He immigrated from Holland in the nineteen fifties, went to high school in Alston, and he pushed me to go to university as well. I now work at a university that works hard to ensure that any student from any walk of life can have access to a university education and thrive. Since two thousand and six, our mandate has been to provide learners with access to degree level education. When the Aurelia campus was established in two thousand and six, next slide, please. The degree attainment rate in Simcoe County was significantly below the provincial national averages. In twenty sixteen, only eighteen point three percent of people aged twenty-five to sixty-four in Simcoe County had a bachelor's degree or higher, less than the provincial average of thirty-one point nine percent. Since twenty sixteen, Lakehead Aurelia has seen tremendous growth in its student population. We've seen a forty-one percent increase in university degree enrollment at Lakehead Aurelia. And forty-five percent of our students come from Simcoe County. Lakehead is committed to help Lakehead is committed to helping students overcome barriers to access and offering every student a transformative experience. This is reflected in these statistics you see on the screen in front of you. Our commitment to access is reflected in our unique pathways to entry. Our student support programs, strong retention and graduation rates. And the impressive employment outcomes of our graduates. Ninety four percent of our students have at least one barrier to education from financial to accessibility requirements. And over fifty percent of our student population is the first in their family to go to post secondary. So our smaller campus tends to feel more like home and more familiar. One of our biggest draws is the fact that we are in Simcoe County. And as you'll see on the next slide. Lakehead works hard to support students and their success. We also play a significant role in the economic development of our region. The economic impact of the Aurelia campus alone is two hundred forty five million, and that doesn't factor in. Lakehead overall, which is three point five billion on Ontario's GDP. Having a university here in Simcoe County generates a number of benefits. Attracts students from other parts of the province to the county, increasing the number of students that will that will live here and stay here. We have over twenty five hundred Lakehead University alumni living within Simcoe County alone. We also attract students from other countries, increasing diversity and of the population for the whole region. Lakehead Aurelia currently has one hundred eighteen international students coming from twenty nine countries. We've also seen a twenty eight percent increase in the on campus population since twenty eighteen. And after graduating, these students apply for work permit permits that allow them to work here for three years full time. And that allows them then to apply for permanent residency. We also attract talent to the area, faculty and staff moving to Simcoe County, becoming residents, contributing as taxpayers. But also as residents buying local, living local, et cetera. Over two hundred fifty faculty and staff are employed at Lakehead, including myself, living here in Simcoe County. We've heard in our conversations with local businesses and industry. That there's a great need to continue programming and create programming to meet the needs of the labor market. Both training and upskilling current talent. In our partnership with Georgian College, we've introduced new STEM programming, including highly sought after programs. In computer science and electrical engineering with a new engineering program set to launch this fall. On the next slide. Having Lakehead here in Simcoe County means that students can stay in their home community to study. Which makes them more likely to stay here once they've completed their degree. Out of the twenty one hundred students currently enrolled in the Aurelia campus and Lakehead Georgian. Nine hundred fifty of them come from across Simcoe County, eighteen from the town of Midland alone. Alumni like Ryan Provo, who completed his undergraduate degree in business, grew up in Barry, lives in Midland. And works locally, and I'll share share his story now with you.
Hi, my name's Ryan Provo. I'm from Barry, Ontario, and I currently work in Midlands, Ontario at a company called Lab X Media Group. Head set me up for success just by, you know, having smaller classroom sizes. I got to, you know. Meet a lot with the professors after class, spend time with them, learning about them. Getting to know them on a more personal basis, which is awesome, and I don't think you can really do anywhere else. So that was a a great thing for me. In terms of success. Those interactions with those professors on a personal basis helped me develop a lot of my skills. And just even the opportunity to go to your professor. A lot of universities are in. Have classes that are, you know, hundreds of people, right? So. You won't have that same opportunity to go and speak to your professor after class casually. The university has been able to provide me with the skills and tools in order to succeed in my career.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. So when we're asked how many of our students work after graduation, we can proudly say that ninety seven percent of our graduates from the Aurelia campus. Find work within their field of study within two years. That's been consistently above the provincial average for many years. Lakehead also connects local employers with talented students and graduates seeking part time, full time, and cooperative positions. Next slide. So while Lakehead University is a relatively small university, we're consistently one of the leaders in terms of research and productivity impact. Since two thousand six, Aurelia faculty researchers have been awarded more than six point three million. In research funding, cybersecurity, the arts, the environment, et cetera. And although we have two campuses, we operate as one university. Which means that governments, industry, business can access the researchers and innovative areas of study across our campuses. Our history, collaborations, areas of research activity align with the communities that we live and operate in. Dr. Thiago de Oliveira, an assistant professor in the Computer Science Department. Is working on industry leading research that could give robots touch sensing capabilities. His team is investigating interfaces that integrate tactile perception. To state of the art computer vision systems so that robots can feel the features of objects they touch. For example, the shape, texture, temperature of objects. The results of this research will provide solutions for practical problems in the health and industrial sectors. Next slide. In addition to industry partnerships for collaboration to conduct research. Lakehead also provides access to resources for industry as well as educational opportunities. As you can all imagine, education must evolve to continue meeting the needs of our region. Lakehead continues to work hard at this, at both the high school level and with people who are retired. As part of a lifelong continuing learning program. Working with high school students in the specialist high skills major program. We've offered the Ontario Youth Naturalist Certificate Program in high schools across the county. Through offices, through our Office of Community Engagement and Lifelong Learning. Our team facilitated lectures and workshops in the last year for over seven hundred fifty learners in the fifty plus category. We're also partnering with local businesses to create micro programming such as equity, diversity and inclusion training. To support the upskilling of our current workforce. Research collaboration offers industry and business partners access to unique knowledge, facilities, cutting edge innovation. Through partnering with either Lakehead University's Thunder Bay or Aurelia campuses. You can enhance your products and services, expand your markets, advance yourself or your workforce and more. Next slide. So what is next? You can be proud that Lakehead is the highest ranked university in the world. With under ten thousand students in the Times Higher Ed Impact Rankings, a global ranking. The Aurelia campus now has over two thousand students and we're out of space. We're also looking into the future and remain committed to serving the county. This means we aim to grow our student body from two thousand to thirty five hundred students. And we'll add ten new programs, programs that align with the future needs of this region. So our future is growth and service. Last slide. And that's my thank you slide. Thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on this wonderful university. And I'd also like to invite the mayor and council to a campus tour at any time. We're happy to set that up. And through your worship, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Denhan for the presentation. I myself have taken a couple of courses a couple of years ago at Lakehead. It was very beneficial to what my needs were in writing. I'm still.
Great.
Rare to do more writing, but I really thank you for providing that service to the community, and I'm sure that there are other. Types of services that you do provide for different needs for different clientele. That want to advance their knowledge or education. So thank you very much for your presentation. I have. Now some questions from council. I have Counselor Downer.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. One of my first duties. When I was elected mayor in two thousand and six was to sit on the advisory board. And it it does my heart well to see how far this university has come. It's just amazing for for all of Simcoe County. You can be very proud. A job well done, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for being part of the beginnings of this university.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions I have? Your worship.
Thanks for the great presentation. Some takeaways from this, the robotics and tactical and tactile interfaces. I mean, that sounds like our own little MIT equivalent. Right here in North Simcoe, which is really exciting. And it's also great to hear about that really economic development goal where we are working or you are working to attract, train, and then maintain. Youth in Midland and North Simcoe post grad, which is another really important thing for us, just keeping people. We know people want to come and live, work and play in our Simcoe, but typically it's, you know, in the middle or. You know, twilight time, not in their youthful vigor where they want to go off and explore other wild places in our country or abroad. So the fact that we can do this in our in North Simcoe and actively train and maintain is really a a very lofty goal and. I wholeheartedly support that. And when you your slide about upskilling. I truly believe that is the key to solving the evolving needs, the ever quickly evolving needs and opportunities in our workforce. And trying to fill all those massive gaps we have. People that come from traditional. Work that no longer have the skills to meet today's new market and economy. So my question for you is with our Georgian campus for Georgian College, we have some great skills, skills building programs here, including. Trades, the much sought after and needed trades. Are there Lakehead programs? Actually happening at our Georgian campus or does anything that's Lakehead related in the Lakehead Georgian relationship need to happen in the Aurelia campus?
It's it's actually happening at the Berry campus for the most part. We've got a joint engineering initiative with Georgian. And we're expanding those programs largely at the Berry campus. I'll look to my colleagues to see if there's there are other ones here. There are. Yes, can my colleague come up and? Come on up, Jacqueline. So this is Jacqueline Busek. She works with me at Lakehead University. Yeah, go ahead.
Through your worship. So for the Lakehead Georgian Partnership Program that we have, we have four programs. So as. Mike mentioned, we offer electrical engineering and electrical engineering is offered all four years at the Georgian Berry Campus. We also have the Computer Science Program. The first two years of that is done at the Georgian Berry Campus, and then the last two. Are completed in the Aurelia Campus. We have an Applied Life Science Program, the same. The first two years are done at the Berry Campus, and then the last two are done in Aurelia, and then an environmental sustainability program. That is also offered the first two years at the Georgian Berry Campus, and then the last two years at Lakehead Aurelia.
Thank you very much. I I have fond memories of Georgian College back when I had hair many years ago. I'm an alumni of. Law and Security Program back in the early nineties. So it's it's great to see these partnerships working and higher education at play and. Results we see in our community and our young people and not so young people that want to go back and upskill and get new education. Perhaps work on their writing skills to author a book that may be coming soon. So we shall see. Thank you very much again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I have Counselor Ball. If you have a question or comment.
Thank you. Impressive statistics. I just actually wanted to know the amount of programs which you just answered. So thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Ball.
Yes, thank you. Deputy Mayor, thank you very much for coming to to. Tell us all about the Lakehead University. I have graduated. From four degrees. I started it at Laurentian University, which has been rocky, yeah, in the the last little while. I went to the University of Manitoba. Two of those were geology things. Then I went to Osgood Hall Law. Yes. And did a law degree, and then I did a master's in law. So. So it's it's very important, I think, for. In this area to have a university where you can at least start off. With being close to home, and that's what what happened because I was in. I lived in Chelmsford, which is a little town near Sudbury. So. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions from council? Seeing none, Mr. Dehan, thank you very much for your presentation and your colleague coming up to answer. Or you remarked remarks. So thank you very much, and hopefully you'll. Attract more of students to your to your campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on moving on now to. Item sixteen, which is committee, local board, delegation or members. We have. None this evening, but we're going to move on now to. Item seventeen, which is on reports and other items withdrawn from consent. Agenda for council's consideration. This includes also presentations by consultants regarding a report or or under consideration. We have two items. We have a consent item we'll be addressing in the next little while after. We go to. A presentation update with the Caitlin subdivision. Phase two update, and I have the acting C A O that will provide that presentation. Sir, you have the the four.
Deputy Mayor and Members of Council, this will be quite short. We have been working with Caitlin, as you're well aware, on the subdivision for a number of years. And we have had a settlement at the Ontario Land Tribunal. And there were certain requirements that were to come to council tonight for ratification. I want to inform you that those both parties are not prepared to make those. Fulfill those requirements for council tonight, but we are planning to schedule. An extra agenda item on your special council meeting next Thursday where we will have. Everything prepared for council as per the Ontario Land Tribunal. So this is really just here, just so that if somebody looks, why wasn't this issue addressed at council as per the minutes of settlement? This is why it's on the agenda today, just as an update.
Thank you very much for a short, brief statement. I'm sure that there'll be more questions when you do. The next presentation at next council. So thank you, the acting C A O. I'm not quite sure there's any comments or questions. I probably will leave that till the next presentation. So. Oh, I do have one from Mayor Gordon. Mayor Gordon?
Just a quick one for those who may be looking for a little more meat on the bone tonight when they saw this agenda item. This negotiated settlement is. It's through the good work, the mutually good work of both the proponent, in this case, the developer and our town planning staff. Making these settlement options rather than having to go through full appeals and all the costs and delays that go along with that. And this is kind of a recurring theme. We're seeing some of the backlog that's been happening in our planning department being resolved through compromise in these appeals. So I just wanted to again give shout out to our all of our staff have been working diligently on resolving these issues. And also to the proponents out there that have been struggling, getting their their matters, you know, moving through the the process. So without ascribing any blame, both people are, both sides are working really well together, and I love nothing more to see these. These settlements come before council where we can review them and and give them. You know, the checkmark and keep the keep the process moving. So kudos to staff as well as proponents for compromise and working together to resolve these issues.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Are there no further questions? Comments? Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you to the acting C A O. We are now going to move on to item seven point seventeen point two. This is, there is a motion attached with this, and I'll read the motion just briefly. The item that we're looking at is the. The by law for. The open air burning by law, and I'm glad that we have Chief Rano here. This evening, I'm sure if there's any questions, you'll gladly answer those. So to begin with this, I want to read the motion. I need a mover in the second there, and I'll probably reread this at the end to get full approver. So I have, I'll read the motion and. That stuff CSR dash twenty twenty three dash fifteen. CSR dash twenty twenty three dash fifteen opening air burning bylaw dated March twenty second to twenty twenty three be received in that council approved bylaw. Twenty twenty three dash fourteen open air burning as attached to this report. I have this is moved by Counselor Downer and seconded by Counselor Reese. So just give me a second here. Thank you very much. This particular item was withdrawn. I believe that council has read the the report. It's an open air burning bylaw that was established around two thousand and five. It wasn't reviewed since two thousand and fifteen. I'm sure there were issues and concerns that were found in this particular bylaw that the chief I'm sure has gone through it. And there are issues with probably restrictions, the issues of burning of garbage and dealing with complaints. So and then, of course, the permanent fees attached with with this particular item dealing with the community. I want to open this up to the council if there are any particular questions regarding this consent or item. I have Counselor Meredith, Counselor Meredith.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to I guess the staff or I pulled this report. I have a few items to talk about. Do do I talk about each one or just in general or one at a time? So we'll go in order under general. I see that I pulled the old the old bylaw. And and I see you've added more meat to the to the bylaw. I'm not sure, and I'm sure you're going to tell us the issues you've had or in the past to. But I do seem to think it's got good bones to it, the new one. The first under general provisions, three point five, which is the the hours that you're allowed to burn. I was I had a question on on the four P four P M till midnight. And would just like to know how do you establish that that time zone for for burning at midnight? Typically, when you're having a fire, you might start around nine o'clock and and then you'd have to end it at noon. So what I'm what I would propose without any feedback from yourself right now is to extending that twelve midnight kind of curfew. But if you could kind of go into how that was established or the reasoning why, that's my first question. Should I just keep on going or just would you like to answer that right now?
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Meredith, thank you for the question. The open air burning bylaw has been in place for several years. As as you indicated, it's just been added to with more definitions for clarity for people wishing to burn. The timeframes that you have been placed there are standards. It can vary from time to time. The the goal is to make sure that there's not burning all day long and into the wee hours of the night. A lot of locations actually has set a curfew for eleven o'clock. Midland has chosen in the past to go up to twelve, and that part of the bylaw was not changed. It's it's from the previous bylaw, and we continue that.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Meredith, more questions?
Thank you. Would would now be a time to put a motion in to extend the the timeframe or?
If you want to make it a amendment to the motion. If you make it now, that ends debate on everything else until that's debated. So maybe wait till everyone has questions and then if you wish to make an amendment, do it at that time.
Okay, well, most most of my questions are for amendments and clarity. Most of mine are for amendments and clarity on the next points.
Go ahead and ask your questions.
All right, so on on three nine. You know, you for a person a resident obtaining a permit, and I'm sure they get the bylaws with the the permit. Just clarity on, you know, point six cubic meter for maybe something in brackets, there could be something in, you know, more clear a number, whether it's in feet or inches or some that most of the community can relate to. Same with like point six meters in diameter. And then going down to three point nine. The with with campfires, open air burning happening more often. And we've seen probably a lot more during during COVID and being on in your outdoor spaces. The the length away from three meters of any structure, which is about almost eleven feet from a structure. So some people, residents, don't have, you know, twenty feet in their backyards to meet this standard. So there was another motion that I would I would like to do, but but have, you know, work on now. I'm not sure with the you know, the safety issue. Obviously, this is for a safety issue. But I find if if this bylaw is actually enforced, you'd probably see a lot of people without having enough space to to meet the criteria of having a open air burning in their in their backyards.
Chief Renault, do you want to respond to that?
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Meredith. The the distance is set, as you stated, for safety. It's actually a lot smaller than we traditionally see. Fifteen feet is the circumference we normally see, so ten feet is actually bringing it closer. The concern is the radiant heat sparks that can go and ignite neighboring properties, hedges, wood piles, neighboring homes. So the the number again is is was brought down through previous bylaws. And we've just continued or included that the same as it was in the previous years. But it is for a safety to protect other places. So if the if the property is smaller, it's not conducive to safe burning.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Meredith, do you have any other questions or?
Yeah, I'll just keep on going down the list here. So my next question, under the just more for clarification, under permanent not required, four point one. At the end, it has this provision shall be at the discretion of the officer. So that one is it's kind of open ended on and depending on the the officers have viewed the situation, they could differ from one officer to another. So how do you kind of zone in that way everybody's on the equal playing field when they come in? You know, if they're servicing a complaint issue.
Chief, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to to the counselor. It is at the discretion of the officer. We added that because what was happening is the fire departments were called in to deal with neighbor disputes more often than not. And then people tried to use a cooking fire. So having a bonfire and putting a hot dog or marshmallow next to the fire and saying we're cooking and therefore we were permitted to do this. So the the discretion was given to the officer so that they can, when they attend, they can deal with it situation by situation. It's it's very hard to have a cookie cutter approach. That's what we've had in the past. And unfortunately, people that were just having a small little fire, a cooking fire were were required to extinguish it because of neighbor dispute, not because of nuisance fires. So that's why that provision.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Meredith, any more questions yet?
Yes, one last one, I think, going over to under terms and conditions of permit, six, three D not to include wood larger than six inches in diameter. Six inches in diameter would be basically, I want to what's the reasoning for six inches would be my question without going into a motion.
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, to to the counselor. The size limitation, as indicated in the in the first paragraph, is to avoid excessive smoke. As as I'm sure you can understand, the bigger the diameter, the more smoke the fire will will produce, causing nuisance and complaints from the neighbors. So it's it's the goal is to turn around and and have people enjoy outdoor burning without interfering with the enjoyment of neighbors. Again, standard size that we see in in numerous other municipalities. And and it's purely for the to control the fires as well as not end up with nuisance calls for disturbance because of excessive smoke.
Thank you, Chief. Anything, any item, more items, Counselor?
Just a question. So in the last, I guess, four years, like has or the last two years in general, when we see more open air burning? Has there been increased complaints coming in? And is this why this is ratified, can ratified today? Or are these just loopholes kind of to tighten everything up? So just want to understand the past history, and I'm sure as more and more people are enjoying the outdoor spaces that these campfires or open air burning will be on the rise.
Through you again, Mr. Chair, to Counselor. You are correct, since COVID and people being confined to homes, there's been a lot more burning, which has produced a lot more neighbor disputes and complaints. The exact number, like I can't tell you. Part of the reason that we relooked at the bylaw is because the Fire Prevention Officer realized that what we had was not informative enough for people, and people were trying to use loopholes because it was big. He polled neighboring municipalities as well as looked at other bylaws to make sure that we provide as much information and clarity as possible so that people would know exactly what they could and could not do. And then that eliminates the the ignorance to the law because it was not stated. So that's why you can see this one's a little bit heavier. There's a lot more pages involved, there's a lot more information. The goal again is to allow people to 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 burn, but stay within a restriction so that we limit the complaints. It's a fine balance between the two, and that's why you see what you have.
Thank you, Chief. Any more questions? I'm going to try to open this up to other counselors. Just if not, we'll come back to you. Just want to make sure that we reach other counselors. Are there any other questions from Counselor, Counselor Paul?
Yes, thank you. Just one question. In the extinguishment area at eight point two, I wonder if we should also include dialing nine one one because it says at all times the fire is burning, there shall be ready to hand at the sight of the fire inadequate means for calling the town of Midland Fire Department to assist if such fire should get out of control. So I thought maybe we should add nine one one. You think that's a something you might be good for?
Thank you. Chief Renault, I'm sorry, have a response to that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. We can we can easily add that if if you so wish. The reason it was not put in, I think it was simply because nine one one is a is a common number within the the municipalities. It's well known. A lot of times they'll specify specific numbers if you have to use different numbers other than nine one one. But if council wishes, we can gladly make that.
Thank you. Any other questions from counselors on this? I do go back to Counselor Meredith. Counselor, if you can kind of wrap this up in in a series of questions, that'd be great.
Just a question to our CFO. The fines that were, I'm assuming that the fines have have risen over the last couple of years. Do we have any numbers on on the fines if if we're having these issues with the complaints? Have fines been issued to people not complying?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor Meredith. I don't have that information on hand, but I would be happy to email all of council just for informational purposes.
One last question. Fire, Fire Chief. So have we addressed? How many complaints would you say we've addressed in the last two years or even even this past year? Noncompliance and neighbor disputes? And with those there's those probably weren't dealt with by law at the time because I think now by law has more clout in in disagreement. So it would have been the fire department that was dealing with, I imagine, most of the complaints. And were they? Would that complaint be given back to by law for them to find them appropriately? Or how did how did that work in the last last year specifically?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. Thank you for the for that question. The exact numbers I can't give you, as you know, I just started at the end of January. So I gladly look at the number of complaints we've had. What I will say to you is is up to this point, what we've been doing is is the discretion for the officers to continue on wasn't there. If a complaint was put in, the crews would attend that extinguished the fire. So there was no fines at that time. As you see in the bylaw now, what what we realized or what what was brought forward when we were reviewing this is a lot of the complaints were neighbor disputes. And and they were calls that could be viewed as mischief calls by the police because they weren't true violations or safety concerns. In a lot of cases, we had complaints that were put that were anonymous. Once the call came in, we attended. So we've cleaned up the bylaw so that you you have to identify yourself as well as if there are neighbor disputes, that this is not an avenue to do that. And then there are fees that were added so that if you were choosing to go down that road, you would receive a warning. And then and and should fines be required at that point, you'd be fined at the Ministry of Transportation hourly rate for trucks responding to that. So most to answer your question again, the a lot of the there was not a lot of fines issued. It was more of a work and extinguisher, your fire, which then, you know, caused some inconvenience for the people.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Chief. We do have a motion, but I believe that there's a proposed amendment to this motion. And do we have a an amendment, Counselor Meredith, that you want to add to this particular motion that's been read?
Yes, my motions would be on three point five to extend burning through to one A M. Three point nine to have clear instead of in cubic meters and meters, put it maybe in in feet. Terminology.
Hold for a second, Counselor. Yes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through to Counselor Meredith. That would be an administrative change that we can do without having, we don't need an amendment.
So there is no change in the motion then? Madam Quirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just preparing the separate amendment, so I'm just preparing them as Counselor Meredith is saying them.
Thank you.
So I'll continue. So three, three point ten, three point one zero would be the same as three point nine, so just clerical. ten, three point one zero would be the same as three point nine. So just clerical. And six point three D to include wood larger than six to eight inches in diameter. I'd like to make a motion and increasing that a little bit. And that's the two motions. Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. CEO.
Counselor Meredith, for the six point three D, you said to a larger size. Can you say what your larger size is in the recommend in this amendment?
Yeah, because I would just recommend six to eight inches because six inches. If you're if you're over by like one inch, is there is that? You know, six inches or so I just want a little bit of space between that, whether it's just because if you if it's under the opinion of the officer coming in and he's very or the bylaw officer very anal about his measurements, that there's some leeway. So I'm an I'm an avid cottage fireburn. I enjoy my fires. And it's it does relieve a lot of stress. And so at the end of the day, there there are a lot of people out there that 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 want to have these open fires, campfires, and the people that abide by the laws. I just don't want them to be hindered by people that do not abide by the laws. So that's the reasoning for my in-depth discussion on this fire burning law. And and the the other thing is is you know, we have increased by law now. We hired some officers and some more. So hopefully this could be you know, managed through our bylaw department as well and with the the meat that's been added to this by law.
Just a reminder, Counselor, just to keep your tone a bit of the language. That's okay, though, but just be careful next time. Thank you. That's okay. Your worship.
Thanks. I think you just forgot the retentive part. But anyway, we all grin like a bunch of school kids up here. Anyway, thanks. Thanks for that. Just a quick question on the enforcement. It when somebody calls in a bylaw complaint, you know, if it's a it's one in the morning. Right now, we are contemplating having some evenings or after hours afternoon shift type and weekend bylaw enforcement. But is it by law that goes in response to these burning complaints with the new plan? Or is it still fire service employees that would be rolled in case they had to extinguish it? I just wasn't sure who's doing the response. Because if we're going to alter the hours, we want to make sure that aligns with our ability to actually enforce something.
Again, I believe through the chair to the mayor, the Fire Department would still respond to the to the complaint. And then the if there were charges to be laid, either the officer would issue the charge immediately at that point or send our Fire Prevention Officer or communicate or call the bylaw officer. So there's several avenues. Again, it'll depend at the time who's who's available and and what needs to be done at the time. But the Fire Department, to answer your question, would respond exactly for for what you said is is if it is outside of the parameters, it'll be extinguished at that point, either by the the people doing the open air burn or by the Fire Department themselves.
Your worship.
Thanks. And and I'm just going to preface this with I love a good campfire. I love the smell of burning wood. When I was on the Fire Department, I actually used like the smell of burning houses, which is terrible to even say aloud, but I hated the coaches and all this stuff and the lives and stuff that were going with it, but I just liked the smell of burning wood. So I do. I'm a campfire person, and I really enjoyed when we relaxed and allowed to have these things in our backyards. However, my my outlaws, by comparison, they're not anti campfire, they're just anti smoke. And the smoke from the neighbors in the more congested neighborhoods, you know, depending on the wind or lack thereof, will find their way, it seems, into their window. I don't know if it travels across town to get into those windows. It seems like it hunts down the people that don't like smoke. So I guess my only concern with extending the time to one o'clock, and there's plenty of campfires I've had where I've done that. Oh, I've got the finger of fate up here.
We should put the read the most the amendment in before you start.
Oh, before I start my my rambling. Okay, anyway, short, long story short is I I'm gonna have a hard time supporting the extension. And you know, it's only an hour, only because I have to live in harmony with my outlaws who don't enjoy smoke and they like to get their windows open at midnight, knowing that the the fire should be extinguished from their their lovely neighbors.
Thank you, Worship. I have Counselor McDonald. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Cotton. I'm I'm just seeking clarification on the procedure with the proposed amendments that Counselor Meredith has made. Are we dealing with each one individually?
I'll ask the Counselor last Deputy or Clerk to to respond to this. Madam Clerk?
Thank you Deputy Mayor through to Counselor McDonald. Yes, we're about to vote on the amendments and we're going to treat them as two different amendments.
Thank you.
Two separate, sorry.
Any further questions, Counselor McDonald?
No, I was just worried. I was thinking of one was okay, but the other one wasn't. So.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor, if you'd like, I can read the First Amendment.
Yes, go please.
So it's moved by Counselor Meredith. It will require a seconder that section three point five of the open burning bylaw. Sorry, I have a screen protector on my be amended to extend the permitted time for a fire to burn to one AM.
Thank you. Do we have a a seconder for this? Counselor Ball? Is, yep, we have a mover and a seconder, I believe.
Yes, and now you can call the question.
Okay. All those in favor? That's three. Those opposed? Constable McDonald, I'm sorry, didn't see your. No, so that's.
I'm opposed, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's been defeated?
I believe the vote was four, four.
Oh, it's a four. Sorry, four, four. I'm kind of wrong. And so.
If you'd like to call it again, you can.
Yeah, I will call this again. Sorry. Those in favor? Those opposed? Did you get the numbers, Madam Clerk? And where do we stand with that? Sorry.
The motion's defeated.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought at the beginning. So we're back to the first motion then?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'll now read the Second Amendment.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Moved by Counselor Meredith, that section six point three D of the open air burning bylaw be amended to not include wood larger than eight inches in diameter.
Do you need a person, seconder? Yeah. So we have councilees that we have a seconder? Or so, yeah, sorry. We do have first and second, my apologies. Okay, I you read the I heard the motion. I want to ask those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed? That's two, three. So it's been passed?
Yes, the motion is carried.
Yes. Thank you very. Is that all the then we're we're complete with that? Your worship just got to sign it? We're just having a few tactical things we need to adjust to. So give me just a few minutes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the change in the amendment. I just want to apologize to the audience for the delay in just how this works. But anyway, I'm going to read the motion. This is moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor East. Staff report CSR twenty twenty three dash fifteen open air burning bylaw dated March twenty second, twenty twenty three be received in that council approved bylaw twenty twenty three dash fourteen open air burning as attached to this report as amended by changing section six point three D to not include wood larger than eight inches in diameter. I read the motion. All in favor? Anybody opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Thank you for that healthy discussion. We are going to move on now to the agenda again to item eighteen is the notice of motion. Counselors, you do have the opportunity to notify any items for the next council, and there was some discussion earlier by the presentation about dogs. Is is there any motion to be filed for this for for the next? Counselor Ball?
Yes, I would like to put a motion in to direct staff to look into expanding the limit on the dog by law.
Thank you, Counselor Ball. Madam Clerk, do you you have that? Yes, thank you very much. Any other items for notice of motion? Seeing that, we're going to move on to the next item for general announcements. Do any counselors would like to inform of any items you would like to share to the community? Your worship?
Thanks. This one's a little retrospective, but I just wanted to call attention to it. It did achieve some media coverage and a bit of notoriety and a little bit of protest. This past Saturday saw the Midland Public Library, which is a very safe and inclusive environment in our town, host a drag queen storytime, which seemed, you know, kind of just tongue in cheek and a little benign when I first shared that, but was a subject of a lot of vitriol online. And there was a lot of concerns, and there was protests on on our main street as a result. I just wanted to share that I attended this event, and it was every bit as wholesome as I believed it would be under the leadership of our library board. I also had a chance to speak to the people that were opposing it and understand their points of view. And they did so peacefully, and they exercised their democratic and constitutional right to object to what they didn't like in the programming. And then equally, on the other side of the street, we had the people that were protesting, the protesters. So democracy works, freedoms that people have certainly rallied for over the past few years works in Midland, and I just wanted to applaud everybody for you know, keeping the tone reasonable and not bringing it into the library and impacting the kids and parents. You know, who were there willingly with their parents and listened to some wholesome, really nice little kids' storytime books that were pulled right off the shelf from the child section. So I just want to call it out. The library is a source of all kinds of things, and it is the bastion of free speech in town. And this Saturday, I believe, we're hosting a segment of the Muslim community that I won't even try and pronounce right now without destroying it. But if you're interested, this one perhaps even has a bit of controversy because there are devout Muslims of of different flavors that don't even recognize this group as being Muslim. So this just shows you the kind of intricacies and culture that comes to small town Midland in North Simcoe and provides an opportunity for people to learn and about new things and express their concerns, their desires, and and just shows the fact that we are walking the talk and when we're claiming to be an inclusive community. So if you're interested in that, it's at the Midland Public Library this Saturday, and I would encourage you to check it out because there's always really neat programming there. And I would also like to call out that Counselor Bolt has been assigned to the Public Library Board, the new board formed, and this is something new for council, new again that we have Council Rep on the Midland Public Library Board. So I just wanted to welcome Counsel Counselor Ball to that board, and I look forward to addressing the board, too. I have yet to meet them this term. I was invited once, but I had a scheduling conflict, so. So a little props to the Midland Public Library today.
Thank you, Merrick Gordon. Are there any other announcements from council that you'd like to share? Seeing them, this concludes the committee of the whole. I do have a motion, your worship, that I'll be reading to move it to formal session. I have a motion moved by Counselor Ball, seconded by Mayor, Counselor Meredith, that the Committee of the Whole rise and report. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. That's carried. Your worship? Pass it to you.
Thank you. I'll see your motion and raise you a motion moved by Counselor Bald, seconded by Counselor East, that the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole for the meeting of March twenty second, twenty twenty three be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. All right, next, we're moving into motions for which notice was given. And we have a rather lively one, I I expect, twenty two point one. And this is a motion that, just as by way of background, was crafted by Deputy Mayor and myself in concert with staff and consultation to make sure that we weren't winging it when we came back to council with something for Midland Bay Landing. And it's resulted after some wordsmithing and consulting with staff to make sure that what we're proposing is doable in the following motion. So I have this motion moved by Counselor or Deputy Mayor Cotton, and he needs a seconder. I'd be happy to do that. But is there any other counselor that would like to have their name on this one? Okay. It will be me. And that's that council supports the development of Midland Bay Landing, consistent with the official plan, and directs staff to, and there's a bold list, issue a request for proposals or RFP for the sale and development of approximately twenty acres on the west end of the site. The next point is to approve fifty thousand dollars to retain legal counsel for the RFP development and implementation. The next point is approve fifty thousand dollars to retain professional planning support to review RFP submissions, followed by undertake a review of the official plan for the balance of the property pending the outcome of the RFP through a public consultation process. And finally, that the funding will be from the Midland Bay Landing Reserve Fund. Deputy Mayor, did you want to begin talking about this motion?
Yes, thank you very much, your worship. First of all, I would like to thank the CAO for his report of March 1st, just getting, giving us an update on the Midland Bay Landing development in terms of partial closure, closure of the file. And this raised the opportunity to put in motion the aspect of how to move forward. So the mayor and I put together, crafted the next steps. There will be more opportunities as we progress, but it is a new beginning based upon the fine work that was done in the past to get the Midland Bay Landing to where it is. And we've learned a lot from an educational point of view, in tandem with working with staff, coming up with a formula to move forward. That is the purpose of what we're trying to do. Not to say that any of the previous work was left behind. I'm sure that we will move this forward with some of the concepts, ideas, but I think we have a new approach. It's going to be a learning process as we progress. But the most important aspect of this is we want to be able to share this with the community. And how we do that, that's going to be something we'll devise in terms of communications. What is more important is that we have staff that will work with us, with council. Council will be probably receiving a lot of information, making decisions how to move forward. So we're really at the expert advice of staff to provide these answers for us to make these decisions. I'm sure as we progress into the fall time with the identified work, we'll have a better understanding. I just wanted to assure that we fully want to extend this information, sharing of information to an extent with the community. We're not quite sure how this is going to work in the future, whether there will be a committee. Most likely, there will be from the community, but we'll address this as we progress with the work that is planned. So I think from my perspective, I still would like to have communications chair shared with the community and address some of the concerns and issues that arise. We're not quite sure if we're going to get any, I guess, interest from the exterior developers on the west end. But it does provide the opportunity to look at more of a park, parkland area, more visitor-friendly, community-friendly that we're looking at. We just, you know, hopefully will come up with some answers that will be beneficial for this particular project. So and that's the idea is to move this forward at this stage. So your worship, that's my comments. And I look forward to working with the community and sharing that information as we progress. And we'll see what comes out in the next little while. So our council, you're going to be probably doing a lot of reading and asking questions and being updated on where the file is. I think that's very important because you're putting into place to make those decisions. So you have those opportunities to do that. So I welcome the new direction. And I fully understand the concerns and issues that may arise and will listen to all of them. We may not have the answer, but we will surely look to get those answers. So everybody is satisfied. And this is a very important project for the community. So thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you. Before I go to Counselor McDonald, obviously, I have some insights to share on why this is on our agenda, but I think it might make sense before we really start to debate this. So here from our, for Mr. Campbell, about what this process looks like mechanically and the rationale behind it and how he sees helping to guide this process forward from a staff and municipal standpoint. And then I can get into a bit of the rationale and where did this 50% come from out of the blue? And what's the plans for community consultation and the community-led steering committee that we've been talking about for a few months? And I prepared to address all of those things, but I think from a procedural standpoint, it's important you hear from our senior staff who've had quite a bit of time to reflect on how this motion reads and how with your consent, it's going to be executed. So with that, I'll turn the mic over to our CEO.
Thank you, your worship. The Middle Bay Landing site, we've just gone through a major process of trying to develop one end of it. That site is governed by the town's official plan. And that official plan says that the east end of the site, which was the subject of the Middle Bay Landing Development Corporation, is to be primarily residential development. The west end of the site, which is what this motion is about, is to be mixed commercial. When the Middle Bay Landing Development Corporation was formed, it had, its objective was to, you know, try and see how can we best develop that land? Because the official plan requires a considerable amount of public use lands be paid for by the developer to ensure access to the waterfront, to ensure parkland, to upgrade and remediate the sea wall that is there so it could be used. And in the development world, the market is changing as we know, but selling residential is way easier than selling mixed commercial. And from the financing perspective, that'll be the challenge in, as we go down this next phase. A developer typically needs 60 to 80% sales of their development before they'll get financing for it. So in this process, you know, the mayor is asking that we look at the west end of the site, which is under the official plan, mixed commercial development. So it'll have residential, it'll have maybe hotel, maybe it'll have some shops and businesses in there. It certainly will have office space in that area. So there's been a number of developers that have approached the mayor and maybe some other members of council and staff and said they think it might be the right time to develop that end of the site. And there's been a number of developers making comments, having conversations. And as staff, we need to put that dialogue and that discussion into a box. And that box is called a request for proposal because there are commitments that are required under the official plan. And we have to make sure that staff and elected officials don't make inappropriate suggestions to developers. So with that, this motion says, well, let's, you know, create that formal process to sail and sell and develop this land. I believe we'll be going through a very similar process to what the development board went through. The biggest challenge is staff is we'd outsource that time and effort to the board members. And now without using them, we have to find staff time to do it, which means it will be likely a slower process. But if we go through, down this road, if directed by council, it'll likely take at least two months of time to put this RFP together. It has to be on the streets. It also has to be advertised in Europe, given the size of this project. Tender would not close or cross proposals would not close likely till the end of October, going into November. With that, one of the comments from our previous development corporation was during the election process, as the developer was trying to bring forward their proposal, there was a lot of comments made at during the election. Some of it was rhetoric, some of it was real, but it impacted how that developer was considering their investment. And it's a sizable investment that a developer is going to have to make. So again, in this process, if we're going to start this again, because, you know, the mayor just commented on a citizen-led group that might look at whether we have a park or something else on the east end of the site, that's requiring a change to the official plan, which will put the exact same fear into the development industry if we start that discussion today. And we need, and therefore, I'm recommending if we go down this process, we do not start any public discussions on changes to the official plan until we get a developer onboard and get them signed up with what they're going to do. And then we can talk about what we do with the rest of the site. If council is wishing to start debate and changes to the official plan, then I would recommend you do that process and not do an RFP because, again, developers need certainty. They need to know what they're trying to, trying to work towards. And we've just gone through a process where a developer got skittish because we were saying we're changing, we might change the plan. So if we go down this road, I need council to do what the first line of this recommendation is that says you support the development of the site per the official plan. And if you don't do that, well, then let's deal with the official plan first. But that's a two-year process we'll go through. But that would be the appropriate thing to do is deal with the official plan. And then we can deal with marketing the property again. So this recommendation, you know, I gave some edits to the mayor and deputy mayor is what you see here. And if we are going down the RFP process, it'll be for basically half of the site. The budget for Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation was reduced in the budget process, down to $50,000. Out of that, there's technically no money in that $50,000 to do any of this work. So I need council to basically up the budget again. The budget here is coming from the Midland Landing Reserve Fund, which is a negative balance reserve fund. There's no money in that fund, so we just are dragging it down into the negative more. And we hope at some time in the future, when we sell the property, we pay off that internal debt that this creates. And then lastly, the undertaking the official plan review of the balance of the property after we see what the outcome of the RFP is and where that developer is, going back to my comment, we need to go through an RFP that has certainty for the developer and that developer will be able to succeed in their development without fear of getting the changes to their plan that they can't bank on. They may, and they will, in themselves, ask for an official plan amendment, depending what their vision is of that site. So we don't know what they might bring forward to us, but that's part of the RFP process. And it's a lengthy process we'd get to. And we had just gotten to that point with the last developer when it failed. We were about to have some public session showing everybody what was going on. That developer had to make it, was about to make a commitment of a million and a half dollar non-refundable deposit. They pulled out, so they didn't have to make that contribution to our cash flow. We'll have similar requirements in this RFP. And again, we're not talking small dollars and small commitments. So the RFP, you know, all be stealing and plagiarizing from that previous RFP. The previous board did excellent work in preparing it, considering how the market reacts to RFPs. And we'll put together a document if this is approved. We'll go to market and hopefully some of the developers that have been banging on the mayor's door and my door will really come to the table, but we won't know unless we put something out. We can't have them, you know, calling us up for coffee and saying, I got a great idea, I got a great idea. We have to say, well, here's the idea that this town wants. We have a vision for that site. And whichever developer comes to the table needs to help us fulfill that vision. And hopefully, there's a nice financial contribution to pay for public realm and all the utilities and everything else that's on that site. But we won't know that unless we start the process. So that's my comments, your worship.
Thank you very much. I think it was really important to frame that and hear it from someone other than a politician about what's the rationale for getting back to the table on this and not just letting this kind of linger. So that being said, Counselor McDonald's been waiting patiently with her digital hand up. So Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, your worship. I guess, and we had this conversation via email. Deputy Mayor Cotton's motion was to direct staff to prepare a staff report outlining the next steps to be taken with respect to Midland Bay Landing. Mr. Campbell just presented us the framework of the next steps, which I would have appreciated much more in writing. So the way it stands now, I'm not saying I'm opposed to the motions, but the cart is before the horse. I would feel more comfortable voting on this after I receive a written report that defends my decision. As we know, the minutes don't reflect verbal reports. So I propose that we put this motion on hold until we receive more details on the outline that we were just presented with. Deputy Mayor Cotton said council would receive a lot of more informations to make a decision. But right off the bat, we're asked to spend $100,000 on verbal information. And I'm not comfortable with that. I want to do this correctly. And I think I sarcastically suggested that the report was what I read in the Midland today. There was more information there than what was on my agenda. So I'm not going to support the motion as it was given because I was expecting a report. And I appreciate the information that Mr. Campbell just delivered, but I would like to see it in writing.
Thank you very much. Counselor Downer?
Thank you. I have a feeling that seven counselors were left out of the fray here on this. And to the deputy mayor and the mayor acted on their own. And I don't understand with all respect why we weren't all consulted about this and we sat down and had a day meeting if we had to. I can't support it as well. I'd like to know how much money went down the drain from the last developer who was ready to put shovels in the ground. And what about the public consultation that you promised the people when you were campaigning about pause and wait? Well, if we're going to pause and wait, I think we should have the public consultations before we do anything else. Because I think the people of the municipality are feeling jerked around. I know I feel like I'm being jerked around.
Counselor East?
And I thank you Andy for all the information that cheered us and Jack and, your worship, all your hard work. Going to, Catherine McDonald said about the cart before the horse. I feel that as well. And like Jim said about the public consultations, the thing is, all of us, when we, when we ran for our positions, we endorsed community public consultation. I think it's really important that maybe we do look at those steps before we actually put the cart before the horse. Because, you know, even Jack, for instance, said numerous times about public consultation. So before we actually even take the next steps forward, I feel that maybe we should, you know, propose a motion to defer this and have public consultation so that we do have the proper direction on behalf of our Midland residents. And then we can get our feet running as a team together. So, you know, I fully support and encourage, let's get something done soon. But I think it's really important that we hear the public, and that's what we said we were going to do. But I think it's really important that we hear the public, and that's what we said we were going to do, was hear the public. So for me, I would like to propose a motion to defer this and have community public consultations, like Jack suggested.
So just a matter of procedure, if you table a motion to defer, all discussion stops. And normally, I would encourage allowing all the counselors a chance to speak before we stifle that conversation. In this case, I mean, fair enough, I purposely left myself, you know, later in the process before I give some rationale as to why we're doing this. But I'm going to be deprived of that ability if we table a motion to defer right now. If that's your intention and you're okay with that, then I have to live within the confines of our procedure policy.